Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting today, Monday, April 28th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go into executive session, and just before we go into executive session, I just want everyone to know Ms. Bell is...
Ms. Casey.
Oh, Ms. Casey, sorry. I didn't know. Okay. Ms. Casey is by a conference. Thank you. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convene in executive session for the purpose of discussing teacher nonrenewals and invite the superintendent and her central office leadership team into the session.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Christine, all those in favor moving into executive session. Amy? So, okay, so moved. All right, we are back with the public session. Good evening, everyone, again. And the first item on the agenda is the RPS showcase.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome Andres with his teacher, Mr. Sornelia, who are big Formula One fans, as I know many of our students and faculty are as well. And that's right, and a highlight tonight is the Formula One car that was developed by our students in our RISE program at the high school alongside their teacher. So here we go. We're going to turn it right over to you.
Okay, great. Well, thanks.
And welcome, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the invite.
Yeah, thank you.
We have, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Andres. We just did the Formula One car. It was, we just added like logos, like 348 logos or something like that.
Yeah, so many.
We added like so many logos of each club after we were done painting it.
Yes. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through some of the slides, and then we're going to go back, and we're going to talk a little bit more, okay?
All right.
So we can go to the first slide here, and you can get an idea of the whole process. First, oh, no, sorry, the next slide. There you go. So it starts off here based off of a plastic Adirondack chair that we had in the classroom, and we wanted to build something around that. And if you could see, like, we're kind of giving some shape to it here. The blue lines on there have nothing to do with the car at all. They were actually had to do with the students learning the box step, and we had that outlined, and that was for their acting class. So, and we'll go to the next slide.
You can punch me.
At this point, Andreas and Hannah had to readjust the tables and to make it fit within the car, so that was also part of that. We'll go to the next slide. Here is Andreas and Hannah, and they are researching the clubs. Because we've realized, like, you know, we're going to build a car, how can we make this meaningful and purposeful for the school? So Hannah researched all the clubs, made a list of that, and this is them just doing that research, and we'll get, we're going to come back to that one in a moment. You can go to the next slide. This is Andreas. Look, Andreas, there you are again.
I see it on TV.
Yeah, you guys see it on that one, huh? Yeah, they're all over.
See that?
So here we are, just kind of like testing it out, seeing what works, seeing what space we have for legroom there, and you can go to the next slide. There's Andreas giving us the thumbs up. Then we'll go to the next slide. So in order to make the tires, we had to use a cardboard and trace those out, and that's Andreas doing some hard work there, right? Remember, do you remember when you were making those tires?
Yeah, we had to make the lines because without lines, how are we going to make the wheels? That's crazy.
That is crazy. So we ended up cutting out those. You can go to the next slide. So these are some of the things that we're working on. You could see the collaboration, the social skills, the communication, and public speaking. This was all incorporated, embedded into the project, especially later on when you start to see the logos. None of, all the logos had to be designed, and there was a discussion behind every one of them, and students made the final choice on that. So there was a dialogue behind all that, as well as, if you go to the next slide, oh, we'll get that. Yeah, creative problem solving. There's no, there's no, there are no directions for this. You have to, you only have an end game, and you have to keep that in mind. So we had pictures of Formula One cars, like, you know, this is what it could look like. So they have to, we have to utilize the resources that we had, like even like the orange paint. We didn't have any orange paint. We only had magenta and yellow, so we mixed it and came up with that. Artistic expression, research, and information, I mean, there was a lot just constantly going into this. You can go to the next slide. Yeah, the computer skills. Oh, the car made sounds too. I don't know if you knew that. We're going to get to that. We had to use an app for that. And then just the constant use of all of the computers in order to generate these logos. We're using a lot of AI stuff to support that. Yeah, and then the design and construction, there's no, there's no outline for it. Just you have to, everyone has to have the same vision and kind of like go for it, and then take in the students' ideas. Oh, what if we do this? What if we do that? And that, that's the whole fun of it. We'll go to the next slide. So here you see, we have some students that were not in the class but were helping out. So we had help from the students from the Honor Society that come in, and they support the students. So you remember Eva Gigi, right, Andreas? Yeah, they come in a lot, and Sam, he's a student that comes to my guitar flex, and anytime he was free, and sometimes when he wasn't, came into the classroom. I'm like, oh! He's supposed to be in class. But anyway, he was productive. So he helped out. You could just see there was a lot of painting. You can go to the next slide. Lots and lots of painting. I do like the, actually, the way the orange should come out with that mix. In the back, you could see the car kind of slowly coming together. You can go to the next slide. So on this one, we got Andreas painting, and on one side, and on the other side is Hannah and one of the Paris, Mr. D'Sousa, who's working with Hannah on this, and what's happening is that there's a dialogue going on about every one of the logos. What do you think should be in it? What's the next piece? All right, if it's this club, what kind of pictures? So then they put it into the AI, they discuss it. Hannah gives final approval. And then we go to the next slide. These are some of the clubs that we put on there, and we had to make sure that they represented both the school and the club well. Because sometimes you get one, and they're like, no, that doesn't look like that. It doesn't really represent the school. We'll go to the next slide. We wanted to make, we had, you know, silver carburetors, manifolds, and Showa disc brakes. And these were all kind of put on the car in different spots, but the students decided to do that. And there were duplicates and triplicates of many of these, and there was a time when, remember, Andreas, and you and Hannah had to go, and you had to, if you put it on one side...
Yeah, we added our favorite logos in them already.
Yeah, you had to put your favorite logos, and if you put it on one side, it had to be on the exact same side on the other side. So there's a lot of like mental gymnastics on that one. We'll go to the next slide. Here are some for the admin there, the Greenwood tires, yeah. We just, we had fun. That was actually, if you, underneath, we had a functional gas cap as well. And there's all just recycled parts, all these pieces and cardboard that we saw around. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so then we build this car. How do you get it out of the classroom? Which is the big thing. They're like, how you gonna do it? I was like, oh, don't worry, we're going to do it. And we ended up having Mr. Horvath's, what was it, the chess club or the debate club? They, he was like, I'm available, let's bring him down. They move the car, you go to the next slide, now we move it, and then the next slide, you can see this. So we displayed out here, these are all functional lights, and you can actually sit inside the car. That was the whole purpose of it, to really gain, to get people involved literally in, in the car, and to give the students within the RISE program a spotlight for something that's meaningful and that has a wow factor, that... that's meaningful and that has a wow factor that people see and they're like, oh, you know? And, and I, and I want the focus to be on, on this end product, and then, and then within that is a discussion of, oh, oh, the students within the RISE program did that, oh, that's great. So that was, that was part of that. You can go to the next slide. It was pretty big, and I appreciate Mr. Street for allowing us to use right outside of his office for that time. And you can go to the next slide. So here, you could see part of the hood opens up, and that's where you can get inside of it. We also made a driver's license that you can take pictures of within. You can go to the next slide. This is so, aside from this, this is one of the other reasons why we do it. It's just a lot of fun. You get a lot of smiles. I think this picture really encapsulates a lot of the end result of what we're looking for. And then, Andreas, the next one here. We can go to the next slide. You can play this one. So that was a, you have the speaker within it, connected to an app, and it has different speech sounds. Here's our, this, so this also just pulls it all together. Everyone come together. People have all abilities to build something represent, that represents a school. And then if we go to the next slide, this encapsulates more about the project, too.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We are here today to talk about a project that's been so much fun for many of us, your full-size Formula One car.
This wasn't just about building a car. It was about building something that represents our school community. We wanted to create something that would show what we can achieve when we come together.
And that's exactly what this car is, a symbol of the carbon, the carbon-encouraged activity. Each logo you see on the car represents different clubs in your school. We had, it does, made choices and carefully placed each one.
It was important that every club was on the car. We worked to make sure that design represented the club. If your club is missing, please let us know, and we will add it.
This car is involved a lot of work. There was a ton of painting and designing. We spent hours making sure every deal was just right, but only it was also a lot of fun. We got to work together, learning new, learning new skills, getting your idea come back to life.
The best part, you can even sit in it. We wanted this to be interactive, something everyone could enjoy.
This car isn't just a model, it's a roof of what can, can, uh, when we combine your top line and work together. It shows what happens when we build something as a team. Thank you!
All right, I think, is that the last one? Yeah. So, yeah, that just kind of pulls it all together, just the, the backend of that, of going through public speaking, eye contact, rehearsing that over and over. We, we really, we went through that. If you saw the sheet that they were reading from, it's highlighted the different spots to prompt, all these different parts, so they could be successful, and it can come out like that. And it was just, you know, it was great. I know, Andreas, is there anything else that you would like to add about the car and what it was like for you?
Well, when you press the arrows on the app, it makes it go fast or slow down. Like, yeah.
What I want to, what I want to highlight.
The up arrow speeds up, and the down arrow slows it down, all the way down to, to zero.
That's true. First of all, thank you so much, Mike. Thank you so much, Andreas, for being here tonight.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Well, a couple of things I want to highlight for, you know, what this represents is, is a few things, you know, obviously from an instructional end, there's so much embedded. You know, Mike is being modest in terms of the amount of work it took from a mathematical standpoint, and design and construction, engineering, you know, and, and we're just so proud and excited for that level of rigor connected to our, our RISE program. And really, I think more than anything that I'm so thrilled about is that not only is a representation of inclusion, but it was really kind of the opposite than I think traditionally we think about inclusion. It was the invitation of RISE students, would you like to be included in our thing? Not the other way around, right? And I think that's so powerful, and we're just so, so proud of this work, and Andreas, you should be incredibly proud of yourself. And thank you so much for, for sharing this with us, Mike.
Thank you both. Well done.
All right.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
It'll be on display too at the Inclusion Expo too. That's, that's coming up on Wednesday.
Well, we got you on board.
All right, thanks.
Thank you again.
Moving on, thank you so much. Moving on to the next agenda item, public comment. Straight along, report. It will be very quick. First, Ms. Julia London resigned from her seat as a Board of Education member. Her resignation went into effect starting April 22nd. So according to the town charter, the board has till May 22nd to appoint a replacement. The term of appointment will be till the next elections, which are in November 2025. As the town starters, as the town charter states, it is a Republican seat, so it will be filled by a Republican candidate. Anyone who is a Republican meets all the criteria, is welcome to apply directly to the Board of Education too. The deadline for that is this Friday, May 2nd. The emails can go, your letter of intent and your resume can go, sorry, Cheryl, is it first? This Thursday? May 3rd? Oh, all right, sorry, sorry about that. It's May 1st, and your emails need to go to the board chair, that is me and C.C. Ms. Cook, with your letter of intent and your resume. The board will have a special meeting on May 14th, in which the board will interview candidates slash candidates, and then hopefully the board will vote. I will be sending the board, once the deadline has been passed, I will send the board any letter of intent and resumes from any candidates, and then we will discuss questions, and we can go through that when we get there. I also want to thank Dr. Hanaway, I think Ms. Brown also made a public comment, and fellow board cave members and board members for the testimony to House Bill 7277 and State Bill 1561. I think, Dr. Silva, you will mention, you will talk about that very quickly. Also, I want to give a quick thank you to the Richfield Prevention Council for the screening of Screenagers at the Playhouse, that was last week. And I want to talk about this and highlight and say a big thank you to the teen talk counselor from the high school who was there, who was joined by Dr. Liz Jorgensen, and they talked and took questions after. The town meeting is May 5th, and I believe the town referendum is May 13th. The board will have a meeting before that on May 12th. I encourage anybody who has any questions about the process, that includes the appointment, to email or look at the town charter, or email Ms. Cook. And please do attend the town meeting, it is very important to be part of that process. And Dr. De Silva also mentioned, but, which was very nicely shared, the Inclusion Expo is this Wednesday. Dr. De Silva, I forgot the time. It is?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock onwards, and is it at?
The high school.
At the high school. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mahultra, and again, thank you to our students, Andreas and Mr. Sornelia. As Dr. Hanaway mentioned, Mr. Sornelia was for sure being modest and humble, but really it is evidence of the work that happens across all of our, our programs, but most certainly, one of the populations that we recognize needs the most talented individuals that we can find, and we're very fortunate to have Mr. Sornelia at the high school, supporting that population of students. So just quickly, this is expected to be a short meeting, but I want to manage expectations. The month of May will be incredibly busy, so if we get out a little bit shorter than normal, the next couple of meetings, we expect them to be busy, along with a couple of special meetings in between, as Ms. Mahultra mentioned. We do have the Inclusion Expo, and I do want to also share that this is not just for families with students with disabilities, it is for all individuals. We had a great turnout last year. As a result, we've shifted over to the high school so that there's more space. This will begin at 5:00 PM. A big thank you to Dr. Hanaway and Dr. Showa, who was here a little while ago, for organizing and planning, and all of the teachers that participate as well, which are not just special education teachers, they're also general education teachers. So again, this is just another example of inclusion and reverse inclusion for our families. So again, hope folks can come out from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. On the topic of special education, both Dr. Hanaway and Ms. Brown, and myself, have been advocating to our legislators in a variety of different forums. For Ms. Brown, she wrote a, a letter of testimony, and Dr. Hanaway both wrote and spoke live around special education and the funding related to special education, and some of the most important parts in terms of servicing, being, allowing us to service our students adequately, and, and having the appropriate funding to do so. We have many of art shows coming up, but on Thursday, we have the high school art show along with a concert, so it's a twofer for those of you that want to get out to see some beautiful art, and the art across our students, and the diversity of the type of art that you'll, that will be on display. You can do that alongside a great concert on Thursday evening at the high school. Feels like it's Dr. Hanaway's night, but I'd like to thank Dr. Hanaway for spending her Saturday at the Senior Expo, where she met with a number of folks, and thanks to the Board of Education members who were able to stop there as well, and share the work that's happening at RPS, and how the budget supports the community as a whole. I think some of you know that we were able to utilize our vans to support getting seniors back and forth. That was in exchange for, we're not for profit, so we can't pay for a table, but we could help in that type of way, and so we were, we were glad to be able to do that. And Dr. Hanaway, I know, did really enjoy her time at the Senior Expo, and really meeting people in the community that we might not otherwise meet. We have, let's see, I think I may have covered most of it. The only last piece is if anyone's looking to ask me to go to prom, I'm sorry, I'm taken. Class of 2025 has already invited me, that is May 30th in Stanford, so looking forward to seeing our students there. It's a very exciting time for our seniors. I'm sure for Ms. Moore, who has one, I have a senior as well, and this is the time of the year that there's just so many celebrations, of course, at the high school, but quite frankly, across all of our schools. We have our elementary art shows this week as well. I know Ms. Gillette is going to have her roller skates on, along with Ms. Johnson, trying to get to as many as she can on Thursday evening, so a big, what's that?
Two more musicals.
And two more musicals, that's right. We have Barlow Mountain and Branchville, Finding Nemo, and, sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, and there's one more thing that I did want to share, and I, I think that this is just relevant, given we've, we've been hearing like bits and pieces around SSOs and school security, and I received an email today, actually, that I thought was worth sharing, and just for the sake of privacy and not putting a school out there, I'm going to omit the name of the school and omit the name of the SSO. But this was an email that I received alongside some of my colleagues today, from one of our principals. Dear blank, our SSO continues to show great care and dedication to our students. It is moments like the one below that show he is not just doing a job, he is a part of our community. This is not a one-off. On Monday, he stayed late when a bus was significantly delayed. When we recently had a student elope, and if you don't know what that means, it means a student runs away, he was first out the door. Staff feel comfortable and confident knowing that our SSO is vigilantly, vigilantly watching. I remember what we talked about when you asked me what I was looking for in an SSO. I was looking for the face that so many get to see when they enter the doors, and someone who greets them with warmth and authority. Our SSO has been the perfect fit. And here is the response of a letter that was sent to, this is a response from the SSO to a student who was writing a persuasive letter as part of the curriculum, and he wrote back. So here is the, and it certainly made the students day. So here is the response. Dear Charlotte, thank you for your letter expressing your concerns that people are getting hurt on the playground. I agree. The playground can at times be unsafe when children are not following the rules. The playground rules are there to keep everyone safe, ensuring you don't get hurt. If someone is playing too rough, or they are not following the rules, tell your teacher or the recess aid so they can address the problem. That way, everyone at recess can continue to have the fun. Kind regards, and then sign the SSO. Because this is just a, a simple and yet so powerful example of the impact that our SSOs have had on the community as a whole, and I think that this is just one that was just resonated with me today. And I know there's been lots of talk in different communities about what's, what's happening, whether it's SSOs or SROs or anything else, but I can only speak for our community and the value that they've brought in, in so many different ways, and certainly in relationships with students. So good for them. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. De Silva. Moving on to committee chairs.
The Policy Committee met on April 10th, and we reviewed four policies at that meeting. They are, three of them will be coming to the full board tonight for a first read. Those three policies are Policy 1180, Memorials for Deceased Students or Staff, RPS Policy 5123.3, Graduation Ceremonies, and Policy 5124, Reporting to Parents. A fourth policy, which is 7551, Naming of Educational Facilities, we will also be discussing today. And well, that will be clear through the discussion, why we'll be bringing that up. So just wanted to share that. And our next Policy Committee meeting will be on May 9th, I'm sorry, May 8th at 11:00 AM.
Thank you, Christine. Any more? Moving on to approval of minutes, do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes from their meeting on April 7th, 2025.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second? Christine, are there any edits? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes, please raise your hand. Anyone abstain? Tom, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Discussion of possible action items, we will have to amend the agenda, as Ms. Moore said, to add Policy 7551. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that we amend the agenda to add letter D, small letter D, RPS Policy 7551, Naming of Educational Facilities, to the agenda.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second? Christine, all those in favor amending agenda as proposed, please raise your hand. Unanimous from all the members present, thank you so much. Agenda is amended. First item on the agenda is teacher non-renewals.
I move that the Board of Education approve notification to Benjamin Evans, Hannah Fevro, Victoria Guarino, Ingrid Kearns, Hannah Keys, Ashley Lunney, Kristen Meyer, Catherine Servovi, and Lindsay Toby, of non-renewal of their contracts at the close of the 2024 to 25 school year, and that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous from the members present, thank you so much. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, CSDE Child Nutrition Program.
Okay, Ms. Brown.
Hi, everyone. This is always a little confusing when this comes around every year. So if it's okay with you, I'll go off script and just try to make it as simple as possible. Boards of education are required by state law to vote yes or no if you're going to follow healthy food certification to a T with all food items sold, whether or not they're reimbursable. they're reimbursable, or whether or not they're sold inside of a cafeteria. In our school district, in K through 8, we follow healthy food certification. At the high school, we have more flexibility. So historically, this board has voted no to give us that flexibility at the high school. I guess the only, quote, loss we suffer is if we had followed this to a T throughout the school day district-wide, it's an extra $10 per reimbursable meal. That amounts to a little under $20,000 a year. However, the monies that are collected across the district in the high school more than make up for that, and we're able to subsidize free reduced lunch at the high school. So that's why that's gone that way in the past. I hope that makes it easier. The way that the motion is written is dictated by the state, so all of the language there applies and must be, you can waive it, but it must be in the minutes for the motion. And if you continue to vote no, then there's no need to give yourselves an exemption for beverage sale or food sale after school hours at things like sporting events and such. Don't know if that, hopefully it made it a little bit easier.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Brown? No. All right, do we want to read the motion?
Pursuant to CGS Section 10-215F, the Ridgefield Public School District certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards, published by the Connecticut State Department of Education, will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Do we, thank you, do we have a second? Sean, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed of the motion, please raise your hand. You're going to abstain? Okay, so, one, two, three, six.
Amy's here.
Yeah, so, no, we're three, and three, six. For yes, any abstentions? One, the motion carries, or the motion does not carry. Because, yes, the motion fails, yes. It's, yeah.
And so there's no need to vote.
So there's no need for the second.
Correct.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Custodial Maintenance Uniforms, the memorandum.
Karen or Jill?
I can speak to it if you want, just keep the mic on. As part of our negotiating process with the custodial maintenance bargaining unit earlier in the year, or as the year came to a close last year, we wanted to update the uniforms. What was behind that is we want our custodial maintenance staff to be recognizable what their role is and that they belong in the school building. And so some sort of branding on a shirt or outerwear that says, I'm here at Ridgefield Public Schools, my role is, you know, head custodian, or HVAC, or what have you. We worked with myself, Joe, Brett Metters, we worked with the union representatives to agree on something that was comfortable, that was professional, something that they wanted to wear. It was a pleasure to work with them, they were wonderful. And so each of the members of the unit will be outfitted with several shirts, t-shirts for summer only, a winter coat for when they're clearing snow and working outside, and a winter hat. The amount will be budget neutral, right? Once we make this investment, then we're budget neutral, because by contract, we would reimburse $600 when they went out and bought their own things. Now we'll be splitting that, where they'll replenish the uniforms that have the Ridgefield Public Schools, $200 every year will go to that, $400 will go to their pants and their work shoes and/or boots. So we love that it's budget neutral. We love that our staff is going to be professional, they're going to be uniform from school to school, pun intended. And we're looking forward to this being very positively received. Also, in addition, we've gone out to every school with the help of folks in Joe's office, mainly Nancy Gurna, so they could try on, get the sizes right, and we've had all positive feedback. They really like what's been chosen, so. And again, the folks that we worked with, it was a long process, but it was a pleasure. As part of this, we need to add to the contract a memorandum of agreement, which a lot of the language has stayed the same. It used to be under the miscellaneous portion of the contract, but now it spells out how we're going to split that $600. And it will, I don't know if you want me to go through and read it, I think you've done so, it's been in your packet. If you have any questions, Karen and I are here and happy to answer them for you.
Are there any questions?
No, but I just want to say, I think this is such a wonderful idea, and I'm so glad that the committee came to a unanimous agreement, or I assume unanimous, and
We think so too.
We get to vote on this, and that you said, it sounds like it was such a pleasure for everyone to work together, so I'm really happy about this.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement, MOA, between the Ridgefield Board of Education and the UPS EU-Ridgefield Custodian and Maintenance, Local 424, Unit 106, presented on April 28th, 2025. The purpose of this MOA is to establish an agreement regarding the uniform policy for custodial and maintenance personnel.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second? Sean, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Unanimous from the members present, thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Moving on to policies, first read.
So tonight, we continue our work going through the 5,000, well, going through the 5,000 series, but we also have some other policies that we're working through as well through our policy audit. So the first policy we're looking at tonight is Policy 1180, Memorials for Deceased Students and Staff. This policy was adopted in April of 2009, so it's been quite some time since it was updated. Just some background, the policy is designed to create parameters around how the district can honor students and/or staff who have passed away. The board recognizes that this is a sensitive topic, and we are committed to being respectful and mindful to that of that sensitivity as we update the policy. We've asked Shipman and Goodwin to review the language, and they did make some recommendations, which you can see in your packet. They did make recommendations in each section, including the purpose, the types of memorials that are permissible, as well as the ones that are prohibited. Also, the policy outlines how a request for memorial can be made, and also how that request will be considered and subsequently approved. And no memorials will be implemented without board approval. So I'll turn this over to Susie.
Sure.
For more clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I think just to highlight a few pieces of this policy that are relevant, what our policy of the past did not have was language that included what happens when a memorial has to change, for whatever the reason. For example, a tree needs to be taken down, a bench no longer serves its purpose. So that we're also being planful and communicative with whomever it is that is proposing that memorial, so that they can understand what that ultimate transition plan may be, if there is one. Also, what this policy has done through Shipman's help, and Shipman really did look at many other policies as well in local districts, so it wasn't just them adding in language for us, but understanding what does happen locally, is to be sure that it is in line with our other policies, whether that's gifts, donations, or those types of things. It also includes a process that includes time, and what that means is to give the committee that comes together to make a decision around a memorial time to make that decision, because often, as you could imagine, that sensitivity, when it's immediately after an event, can be problematic for everyone in terms of making a decision that's meaningful and that makes sense, and really, I'm imagining, resonates the spirit in which the memorial is intended. So this policy, the new policy, does incorporate all of those different pieces. So those are just a few highlights that I wanted to add.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Or discussion? Okay, so this one will come to the full board for a second read at the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, the next policy we are going to review is Policy 5123.3, Graduation Ceremonies. So this is a policy that was adopted in October 2011, so it hasn't been reviewed since then, so it's been a while. The purpose of the policy is to outline specific standards for graduation ceremonies. It is not legally required, but if we want to keep it, then they recommended reviewing the language to ensure it reflects current district practice. And RPS would like to keep it, after talking to Dr. De Silva and also Dr. Greenwood. And I'll turn it over to her, and she can talk about some of the edits that were made.
Thank you, and thank you again, Ms. Moore. So as Ms. Moore shared, it is not a required policy. There is state statute that governs when we must announce a graduation date, which is actually April 1st. As the board knows, we make every effort to announce that date typically by November, and we do that in the spirit of letting families know so that they may plan for other families who may be traveling here for the purpose of graduation. So while it does say April 1st, that is the statute that we're governed by, that's actually not typically when RPS identifies their graduation date. We do wait for November so we can have a sense of when the snow days are going to land, so we can appropriately plan around that. Secondarily, what's important in this policy that we want to highlight, and one of the reasons that Dr. Greenwood and I felt strongly that the policy should stay, is to really be sure that we're communicating that in the handbook and by way of this policy, that students can be denied the privilege of graduation if they don't complete the requirements, i.e., for example, an internship, for all of our students listening. And secondarily, if there's any behavior towards the end of the year that no longer represents the values of RPS, that they, there could be the potential of them not being, them being denied the privilege of graduating. Lastly, there have been questions from us on, for example, students that may be looking to complete a graduation requirement post the actual graduation day. For those of you who have graduates, you know that we certify that the students have met all the requirements on that particular day. I do, and I turn it over to Ms. Mulhultra or the board chair. And so it really is important that this policy clearly communicate that students must have completed all of the requirements in terms of graduation. And so while it's not required, we felt that this was a policy that needed to be, needed to remain, because that language needs to be strongly communicated.
Bless you.
Bless you. Thank you, Dr. De Silva.
Everybody okay? God bless.
Just want to share the water later.
Any question?
It's allergies.
Yes, yes, you're calm.
I hate to bring this up, but does this address the situation that I've seen on the news over the past couple of years, where there may have been disruption during a graduation ceremony? So that if the school learned in advance that, through whatever sources it has, that there is a planned protest or disruption of some sort that might impact families, that this might address that?
Well, sure, it would follow under our code of conduct. So if we knew that a student or students were planning any type of disruption during graduation, and we had, through our investigative processes, determined that that was actual, they could be prohibited from crossing that graduation line. And while it is rare, we have had students who did not graduate in terms of the ceremony, they still graduated, but were denied that privilege due to behavior, and sometimes that can be an expulsion. That could be some type of behavior that we believe would impact the experience or disrupt the experience for students and families. So it has happened. It is rare, an occasion, that we have a student who has not, who has truly not met the requirements for graduation, that we've not been able to get across the finish line. Most of the time, we look for every opportunity to move kids along and differentiate in whatever way we can, whether that's in the school setting or at times outside of the school setting. Go ahead, Dr. Milli.
The high school also has a, not for disciplinary purposes, but they also have a construct called Senior Support, which really kicks in after first semester for those students who need exactly what it is, additional support, so that they are in a good place to graduate on time. And, you know, from a disciplinary standpoint, seniors are, for the vast majority of them, they're finishing soon, because they're on internship. So, and they want to do internship. They want to be eligible for internship, which requires them to be in good standing for discipline. So now that you brought it up, you know, hopefully we don't have any last minute issues, but, you know, I think that's been a very motivating factor for them, is they don't want to compromise internship.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to say, anecdotally, I've been asking fellow board cap chairs, and I'm glad we do it in the member, because many boards do it much later. So, thank you to the board and to the team for the ability to do this, the way we do it, for so much sooner, so that families can plan.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, and we'll bring this to the board for a second read as well. So the next one?
You want me?
All right, the next one is pretty straightforward. So this one is Policy 5124, Reporting to Parents. This was also adopted in October 2011, so it's been a while. And the purpose of the policy is to outline standards for reporting student progress to parents. Shipman and Goodwin recommends repeal, and Dr. De Silva and her team agree that it's not necessary, and this information is covered elsewhere. Is it in other policies, or was it in the student handbook?
So both of those things. So we have, it's covered in other policies, but most importantly, in the student handbook. And it's just basic information, is that we report information to families, and it's our job to do so and communicate all of those in short order.
Right, and so we're, again, we're trying to clean up our policies, so this is one of the ways that we're able to do that. This policy is not necessary, so we're recommending repeal. So are there any questions or discussions about that? Okay, so that one will come for a second read as well. Thank you.
All right, and then our last policy to discuss this evening is RPS Policy 7551. I think you might all have it in your packets. It's Naming of Educational Facilities. And Dr. De Silva, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're recommending no action. So this is a policy to bring to the board where we don't want to do anything right now, and I think there's a rationale behind that. I will point out that this policy was created 50 years ago. It's the oldest policy that I've seen thus far in my tenure on the Policy Committee, and and, yeah, that's right, that's right, must. And it was revised, so sort of last touched 25 years ago. So maybe if we wait another year, I don't know what the impact will be, but Dr. De Silva, do you want to explain the rationale?
Yes, so a couple of things. So the, you might notice, if you read this policy, that it somewhat connects to our earlier policy that we described, which is the memorial policy, which is why that policy came in at this moment in time. So when Ms. Moore mentioned that, both Ms. Moore and Mr. Piradiso jumped out of the 5,000 series for a little bit and jumped into that, that particular policy, which I think is the 1,000 series, that was the reason, is because it was somewhat connected to this policy. So you'll notice that in Paragraph 2 of the naming policy. However, the 7,000 series are not required policies for the Board of Education, and in fact, you might have noticed that these policies are not on our website, where they are now, I believe we've started to upload them. But the reason that But the reason that this policy is here tonight is because we are in the position of having to name a facility. Because, the good news is, which I actually neglected to mention, shame on me, is that April 30th, we do have our groundbreaking ceremony for the new RTP slash AHS, which I don't think you want me to keep calling the school that, so we need to give that school a name. And I believe that is at 12:30, 12:30 on Thursday, the 30th, at 34 Halpin Lane. Correct. Sorry? Oh, sorry, Wednesday. Oh, my goodness, Wednesday. So Wednesday, the 30th, 34 Halpin Lane. And we are in the position that we do need to name a school. So the reason that this policy is here is because it does require revision, even just naturally connected to the earlier policy that we discussed tonight. And also, we need to move along quickly to name a school. We did, Ms. Moore actually took the opportunity to look to see if there was any charter language in the town charter to determine if there was anything that we needed to consider there. I did speak to our first select person to find out a little bit about how schools have been named in the past. Certainly, I think there's an opportunity to touch base with the historical society. And then ultimately, through partnership with different members of our community, hopefully come across a few names that we could come to the Board of Education for your agreement with, which is reflective somewhat in this policy, but not completely. And I don't think that the, I don't think that you'll actually have time to do both, revise this policy in the way that you'd want to and move along in the sense of getting a name for our school.
So, yeah, I think the recommendation of the committee is that we do not make a change to this. We use this as the framework under which we direct the superintendent and her team to provide some recommendations for the name of that facility, where we'll discuss at the board level. And then after this process has been completed, perhaps in the next board term, we'll revisit this policy for updating.
That's right. And, you know, I neglected to mention that when we were discussing the possible review of 7551 with the policy committee, because it jumped, so this policy did not touch the policy committee yet. Part of the reason that we collectively felt like this is a policy that's going to need a lot more time, is you'll notice in paragraph four, a connection to donors and naming a facility. And whether or not that still reflects what this Board of Education believes or values is important in terms of sending a message to the community, i.e., if you pay, you get to name. And maybe that is something that is important and, and something that we want to continue to consider, or perhaps not. And so that's one of the other reasons that we said, let's, let's give this policy its due time and also get a school named.
Any other questions? This one won't come back?
No, because we're just keeping it the way it is.
This policy would not come back, and if the board is comfortable with the suggestion that Mr. Paradiso just made, the administration would come back to the Board of Education, likely late May, with a few options. Hopefully, we'll have them. If not, other considerations that we've, or problems if we came across any, to share with the board.
Should, should we make a motion to that regard, do we think?
You know, now that you're saying that, I think that that would make a lot of sense if the board, because we are veering from a policy that has been adopted despite the fact that it's not required. It is one that the board has.
So I'll, I'll make that motion now. I move that the Board of Education direct the superintendent and her team to, sorry.
Yeah, because, yeah, we would have to amend the agenda because this is.
Cheryl.
Cheryl. Do we need to make this motion?
If you feel comfortable, yes, but I don't think it's required because they're just following policy.
We are following the policy. Yeah. The policy already exists. You're right.
Well, there's nothing in the, sorry. There's nothing in the policy that necessarily empowers us to direct the superintendent in any way.
So we can, we, we could say that, I guess.
And that was our discussion, that we wanted to be sure that we empowered Susie and her team to be able to do this.
So let's do it.
Okay.
And then if Cheryl, Cheryl can bust us later.
Sorry, say that again?
If I may, I think within Mr. Paradiso, I'm thinking that second to last sentence, when the need has been determined, the board may establish guidelines, and, and input shall be accepted from members of the community. Perhaps tonight, the guidelines that you're establishing is directing the superintendent to come back. Again, you don't, you may or may not agree with the names that we offer and how we came up with that, but that would be a part of the process if you're comfortable with that.
But is that even on our agenda right now? No, I see what you're saying, yes.
Sorry, but is that even something, that particular motion that we're about to make, is that even on our agenda right now that we can insert, like, all of a sudden create a new motion regarding a topic that doesn't?
No, I'm suggesting that, correct. I'm suggesting that you don't need it because that's second to last line, is allowing the board to establish those guidelines. And so, so long as the board is comfortable with that, and there's no one in opposition tonight, we would move forward with bringing the Board of Education some considerations for a name. That would also include, again, reviewing the charter, speaking to the first black person, checking with the historical society, touching base with community members that might actually be students and others, and then coming to the Board of Education with what we've done, and then ultimately, some recommendations.
Sure. Yes. Yes, because that's an action item, and it's not listed as an action item. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda, 2025, 26 kindergarten enrollment, Dr. De Silva.
Sure. So you actually have two items that are separate here on the agenda, but in some ways, they are together because we're talking about enrollment. So the first, the Board of Education, each year, just around this time, gets a sense of what that kindergarten enrollment looks like. And so what we've included in your packet are several charts, or at least two charts. One is you have the past kindergarten data by a month, starting in April, and then ultimately May, which we'll do from now until the end of the year. And so you'll notice the percentage of students that have been enrolled, let's say, by May 1st. This is giving you a quick, a quick glance. We're lower than the past few years at 67% by April 1st, but been higher than a couple of years back in 2021 and 2122. So what I'll say that's somewhat connected here and in the next policy item, is it is very typical that families move and register in this late spring and summer months. So it is hard to determine at this moment in time whether this will actualize in the way in which it looks right now. However, as I shared in my RPS news on Friday, it is really important for those families who are already here in Ridgefield that are waiting to register their children not to register. First and foremost, we have our spring events that we would want to invite families to, and then also, we have hiring of teachers and/or having to, what we say in, in our world is reducing our teaching force as a result of not having enough classrooms or sections. So please encourage those that you know that are coming to kindergarten next year to register as soon as possible. That way, you have all the information you need to start off the school year just right, including all the events that happen in the summer months, including the playground fun. So you can just take a look there, and you can also say, take a look at it by school. So that's the second chart. So for those family members that are looking to see, okay, how many kindergartners are in each of our schools, you can see that breakdown for fiscal year 25, 26, and the years prior, just to see that trend data. And I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Has anything, so it is a little troubling to me that we're basically at the same level of enrollment as we were during a COVID pandemic. So I'm a little concerned, is there anything that we're doing differently? Or is there anything we're not doing in terms of outreach, or?
No, I would say, in fact, I think we're doing a little bit more, reaching out to the preschools that we haven't in the past. I'm just going to venture a guess that there's two things that could potentially be happening. One is less five-year-old children in our, in our community, and two, those children that would not have been turning five by the new deadline may be opting into another school setting. And of course, as, as some that are, as our board knows, those students who are, who have an IEP, who are not five by September 1st, are eligible to enter into another year of preschool at VP.
And just to confirm for everyone watching at home, the right way to register is to go to the website, and there's a link on the, on the website, right?
That's correct, right. And if you have any trouble, you can contact your school, and we'll be glad to help.
Are we seeing any correlation with the TK year or that extra preschool year for the kids with the IEPs?
Yes, I think that, right. So I think what will happen, not necessarily connected to the COVID question, but I think what will happen is you'll start seeing this level off, right? Because it's going to happen that way every year, so you're going to have some students hold, stand behind, and then children moving on. So yes, I think that you're going to have some students that are not age eligible, and those families have now had time to plan for an additional year of blank, whatever that blank is, whereas, let's say, last year and the year prior wouldn't have been a variable.
Any additional questions? No, so moving on to the 1-5.
Sure, I'm going to take that one as well. So you also have in your packet grades one through five student enrollment. And just to clarify, this is something that we have not typically reported to the Board of Education. I believe that at least Mr. Paradiso, someone else may have asked last year to ask the superintendent to come to you each spring to share out those numbers, grades one through five. And I think part of the reason, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Paradiso, but part of the reason that may have been requested is because there were some questions around clarity of class size, how is this connected? And so this is that, this report is really giving you a very, very early sense of what enrollment looks like in grades one through five. Not different than what I just said for kindergarten, although slightly, I'm a little bit apprehensive about showing these numbers so early without providing a little bit more context. Because as I mentioned earlier, families move in and out in the summer months, and that, this data changes daily. So in fact, when we produce this report for all of you, I believe, like, just three hours before, we had a set of twins register and someone else, and therefore, those numbers changed. So they change frequently, but it does give the board a sense of, okay, how many sections did we project? Where are we actually? But these numbers will really fluctuate from now up until the day that we open up that portal to let families know their class, their class assignment, obviously alongside teacher, these numbers can go up and or down. So you might be expecting three sections, and all of a sudden, you have four, or you had three, and then you have two. But it will give you a sense of where we're moving along, and if the board likes, we can report on this once a month into the summer, if that's something that the board would, would like to see.
Yeah, I think your exact words were, you don't want to cause any undue concern, back when, back when I said I'd love to see this. I think this is great. Thank you so much for sharing it. I'm trying to make my concern undue in my head a little bit, because I do see the negative nine, and it's, you know, you worry about that. But if, I think if you dig into the numbers, you could see, you know, you had two more kindergartners in BMES, and all of a sudden, you get that section back. So it's.
That's correct.
I don't, I don't envy your jobs because it's, you could tell it's, it's something you're probably monitoring on a day-by-day basis.
What's that? Yes, we monitor on a day-to-day basis for a lot of different reasons. And, and most importantly, we want to keep our exceptional teachers in district, and we want to be sure that we're meeting our class size guidelines that the board has, has established as guidelines. So we want to be sure that we're appropriately staffed. And they change so, I mean, a set of triplets throws everything off, right? They change so often. And Karen actually provided some really interesting data. And Karen, I'm going to try to remember it exactly the way it is, but when we asked Karen, over however many years she's been here, let's just take many, but we're going to say, let's say 10, although I think it was more years, 10 years, how many teachers did we potentially reduce that we were able to bring back? And Karen, maybe it was more than 10. Was it 20 years that you gave us?
Yeah, well, I had said, as on the agenda item today, were non-renewals. So I said to Dr. De Silva, every year, and I'm talking about elementary right now, every year, I've had to non-renew elementary teachers, and this is my 21st year in this job. And every year, I have hired everybody back and hired new additional teachers, except one person more than 15 years ago.
Right. So that's, that's pretty significant data. We still have to do our due diligence and let people know so that they may plan. This is their career. This is their livelihood, right? And the good news is, is that the majority of the time, we've been able to hire our teachers back. And so that's good for us and good for them, and also it's hard because it's a little bit of a gamble, right? If you're the teacher that ultimately isn't sure, could you potentially go to another district because there's an opening and you don't want to take that gamble? Absolutely. For us, it looks like we haven't had that challenge here, and other districts are in the same boat as us. So they're making the same decisions based on the numbers that they have. So not to suggest that that makes it any easier for our teachers, it isn't, but that's how every district that has had to determine the, the hiring process and the teachers they're going to keep based on class size, they do it exactly the way we do. The deadlines are the same also, in terms of when we notify our teachers and when we bring it to the Board of Education. So that is a typical part of the process. And as Mr. Paradiso just mentioned, you can see just one student up or down can change things, so, and they do.
Well, that, that is a nice thing about the transparency that I think you're providing here, because my, my heart does go out to those educators who are sort of caught in limbo here. But, I mean, they can look at this too, and hopefully feel heartened by, hey, this is really close. This is not necessarily something that's a done deal.
That's correct. So just this past week, we broke a section in one of our schools because two students just happened to come in, and there you go. The, the other piece also, I think, is important for the community to know, is when parents begin the registration process, it's important that they finish it. Because if they begin to register but don't fully register, that doesn't actually count here. So we may have students here that are what we call the preregistration process that are in queue but haven't completed it. Maybe the parents are looking for the birth certificates or whatever it is that they need, the electric bill, whatever it is, and they haven't completed the process. So also, those of you that are out there that haven't, you know, hit go, please, please do so, because that really does, does help. And our principals are great about, and our secretary is actually about reaching out to those families and reminding them, moving along so we can get this all completed for this reason. And again, it's all for, for a good reason.
Yes, Chris. Just quickly, is that what you're referring to? Are those the pending K enrollments?
So yes, that's pending K, but we have pending in other spaces as well.
Okay, I see. So they've started.
So also, right. So we have pending K enrollments that could be preschool, that we're shifting from ones, right, they're all now, let's say, at Barlow, and then we have to assign their schools that could potentially be it, although I think we've done that in these numbers. But it could be someone like that. But then we have many of, of folks that might be registering into our district that have started the process, not completed it. But then on the flip side, families that are looking to move in the summer months may not be withdrawing yet either, right? Because they're not necessarily in a hurry. That's going to happen no matter what. And that could potentially be holding up a number on the other side. So it does go both ways.
So Ms. Moore, if you look at the grades one through five, you can see where, based on the class size, where one more student would cause an additional section. So it would break. So if it's third grade with 50 students, if you get 51, then you, then you break. So you can see there was a bunch that are very close. And poor Karen, we ask her every day, did it break? I think I asked her this morning. I know one already broke before, but is there anything else since we spoke?
And it's always interested me with the half kids, 23.5. Splitting you down the middle, kid. No worries. Come right to school.
Just one other note, you had mentioned, Dr. De Silva, whether, you know, the board would like to see this again. I, I think this is great, like, when appropriate, if the board agrees, like, I'd love to see sort of an update of this.
Sure, we can. Sure, we can, if the board would like this, you know, each month while we're in session, we can do it once a month along with our kindergarten report. It's, again, I just caution in, in jump, getting too emotional about it either way. Uh-oh, we might lose, and uh-oh, we might gain.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. De Silva, and thank you, Karen. Moving on to items of information, Karen, quickly.
Okay, so quickly, for the monthly enrollment change, you'll see that our 4,468 is six students more than last month. The driver there, as it is each month, is the preschool where there was five additional students. I know Dr. Hanaway had informed us of that anticipation of that increase at that grade level. And then you will see three additional outplaced students for a total of 4,526 or nine additional students.
Thank you, Karen.
And then next is the staffing update. So you will see any of the retirements, resignations since last time, and any new hires. Obviously, we're starting that season, so we'll start it, that will creep up.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
The last item on the agenda, correspondence to the board, is their public comment. Correspondence report.
Since our last meeting, the board has received four messages regarding district operations and one message from a vendor soliciting business.
Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone. We're at the end of the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Let's record, thank you. Second, all those in favor? Meeting adjourned, thank you.